This conference will now be recorded.
Whatever it is this week.
She don't want me singing. Born of his people. Thank you. Washed in his blood. After the fact, I realized I could just use. Put it up here. Squint my eyes.
It is 5:30. We call the city commission meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gengler?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Spelman?
Here. Those who would like to join us. Mr. Josh White.
Good Lord, we thank you for bringing us together tonight. We just ask that you give everybody the time to speak. Clear minds and be able to make the right decisions. We thank you also for the ability to to use our rights today to vote. Thank you for that right in our nation. We also want to thank you for the veterans that will be celebrating later this week. And thank you for their sacrifice and all that they've done for our country. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's do the pledge tonight. I also want you all to be reminded of our veterans.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any dedications or additions?
There is none.
I make a motion where you approve the agenda as written.
Second.
If we move to second, we approve the agenda as written. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Awards and proclamations. Whereas Community Foundation Week, created in 1989, by President George H.W. Bush, recognized the important work of community foundations throughout America and their collaborative and innovative approach to working with public, private, and nonprofit sectors. And whereas, for more than 27 years, the legacy of regional community foundation is made it possible for our Kansas City citizens, businesses, and organizations to create permanent philanthropic resources for the current future needs of our community. From basic human needs to creating innovative solutions that transform our towns, cities, and communities. And whereas, legacy of regional community foundation provides the opportunity for individuals from all walks of life to be philanthropic with over 100 community foundations, affiliates, and area funds in Kansas. And whereas, one of the greatest ways to ensure a strong community, economic vitality, educational success, and effective government community leadership is through the active presence of the community foundation that allows for local community-based endowments. And whereas, together, we can build a stronger Arkansas City and Kansas and improve the future by creating community legacies to benefit all of Kansas. And whereas, legacy of regional community foundation provides beneficial grants to our community, support critical community causes and efforts. For instance, the nonprofits in our region and makes our community stronger. And whereas, it is critical to set aside a time to recognize the value and impact of legacy of regional community foundation on a regional and local level for the investment, partnership, and leadership they create across many of Kansas communities. Now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, must hereby proclaim, proclaim November 12th through the 18th, 2023, as Community Foundation Week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Karen, appreciate it. Thanks. Appreciate everything. Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you for supporting our celebration of unity also.
Awards and proclamations.
Introduce since we're a new police officer, Ethan Stevens.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager. Thank you for a few minutes to introduce a new employee at the police department. Ethan Stevenson began employment with Ark City Police Department on October 19th, 2023. Ethan has successfully completed all of the rigorous phases of Ark City Police Department hiring process, including written examination, interview board, executive interview, a thorough background investigation, polygraph test, psychological exam, online personality test, physical capacity tests, drug and alcohol screens, and a medical exam. Officer Stevenson comes to us from the Cali County Sheriff's Department, where he is working as a correction officer in the jail. During the interview process, Ethan was asked why he wanted to work at Ark City Police Department. He said, he grew up in Ark City, went through the DARE program at Adams Elementary, and had positive interactions with Ark City police officers while he was working at the county jail. And he wants to serve his community. We are excited to welcome Ethan to the Ark City Police Department. And at this time, I'd like to ask Tiffany, our city clerk, to administer the oath to Officer Ethan Stevens.
Please, ma'am, you're ready. Can you repeat after me? On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My favoritie.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself.
Hold myself.
And others.
And others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Kansas.
And state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
You've moved to a great place.
Appreciate it.
Consider the agenda.
I make a motion we approve the conservative agenda as written.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the conservative agenda as written. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All business.
Item number one, discuss and explore options for the remaining balance of the Legacy Foundation principal, Wilson Park.
So if you recall, we had Yasmin Woods with Legacy Foundation come to the work session Friday and talk about some of the options. I think one of the committed options on top of this would be to.
Transfer those funds to the.
Beautification Endowment Fund that's in legacy. That would allow for the interests and stuff earned off of that to be continued to be used to help with beautification-type projects throughout the whole community. It would be beneficial to the folks that are taking care of the flower gardens at Wilson Park. They would have access to it along with other entities. So again, that's, I suppose that would be the status recommendation. If you guys have other ideas, then we definitely will pursue those and see what we can do with that.
Now, that's different from what we did with the pickleball people. That 14,000, that's a different.
And all this left now is that $1,500 filled out to assist with, you know, our gardens at Wilson Park.
And that could be, people could continue on to support that by donating toward that cause and that account.
Yeah.
Good.
And according to Yasmin and the person that oversees that particular fund, they are willing to work with the group that is doing the fire, the vacuum fire garden and help with replacement of plants and supplies. That fun.
Further discussion?
I guess I make a motion we leave that money in the remaining balance of Legacy Foundation. It was called the beautification.
Yeah.
For a use of all.
We'd want to transfer it from the friends of Wilson Park to the.
Okay.
To the, it's to the beautification fund.
So your motion to transfer it to the Ark City Beautification Fund or the fund dispute?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing then, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we put on our website, you know, about this Legacy Foundation? So people, you know, if they want to donate, they can. I mean.
Motion carried.
Sorry.
New business.
Item number one, under City Manager's Department, authorize a resolution of support from city commissioners to M Street Homes LLC to apply for tax credit.
So if you recall, a while back, Alfredo Sempel with, and his investing group came in. They were looking at developing some homes on the old ball diamond area, Sleep Edition. At that point, we went into a memorandum of understanding that would allow them to kind of get all their financing and all their plans in place. And then, once that's done, we could transfer the ownership of the property to them at that point when they're ready to develop. So currently, the ownership of the land is still in the city's. So Alfredo approached me. He, they need a resolution of support to apply for tax credits for part of their financing package. And I think Alfredo is here if he would want to. If you want to kind of give them an update on what you're up to there and what you need to.
Yes, so this is for the. Hi. So this is for the Kansas housing investment tax credit. So part of the application processes, they have to, you know, we have to get pretty much a letter of support. And one of them is from the city. And we acquired one from Creekstone, one from Campac, and then working one from the bank. So pretty much, this is going to really allowing us to solidify what the needs of the city are and the support from the city. And that we do this collectively as a community. And pretty much, that's why I approached the city with this, for this letter. Question?
I think it's a great project. I mean, it's going to give us 50 homes for people, horrible homes for people that.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Come back later on, so if you say 50, right? When I'm here, we got it. Yes.
Okay. Forty-eight.
Yeah, so. And I think we have a tremendous, you know, team behind it and just the city and the community is coming all together. So we're very excited.
I would like to move that we authorize this resolution of support from the governing body to M Street Homes LLC, excuse me, to apply for the tax credit.
I'll second that.
Okay.
It's been seconded.
I reject it, I think.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing then, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing rezoning of blocks 19, 20, and 21 of Sleep Edition from P Public Use to R3 High Density Residential District.
I won't spend a lot of time on that item. Basically, this is, in addition, it kind of corresponds with the last item you just approved. And in order for them to proceed with the project, they have to have it rezoned. Right now, it's public district because it used to be the Sleep Ballparks. And so what you'd be doing tonight if you were to approve this rezoning ordinance would be to make it an R3 district, which is the high-density residential. That gives kind of the maximum flexibility for what they're trying to do there. And so that's why I recommended that particular district.
And the planning commissioner, you unanimously approved this change.
In October.
This is just kind of the next step along to help them get this developed, so.
You shouldn't have Josh read the whole ordinance too. I know you can. I make motion authorize the rezoning of blocks 19, 20, and 21 of Sleep Edition from P Public Use District to R3 High Density Residential District.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing then, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number two is hold a public hearing and consider a resolution declaring structures at 820 South Third Street, 610 North Fifth Street, 126 South Eighth Street, 120 South Ninth Street, 122 South Ninth Street, 1504 South G Street, 514 East Cedar Avenue, and 525 East Cedar Avenue as unsafe and dangerous and directing and that since structures be repaired, sure or otherwise made safe, or in the alternative, the most.
If the commissioners, Madam Mayor. Have eight structures here, please consider raising all this here into deemed dangerous. The first one is 820 South Third Street. Next. That's 820 South Third Street. That's the front of the house there. Yeah, next. As you can tell, some of the damage on the house, what happened to this house? A few years back, it actually had a tree the size of, about a three-foot September tree, all up to the north side of it, which moved the south wall about a foot and a half. And so it's listing to the outside there. Next. There is damage up there from that, from the house tweaking in there. Some of the roof damage on top of it. Next. And some of the overhang, I'm guessing that the fascia is rotting too. Next. Windows are boarded up. Next. The fascia is falling, the sofa is falling down on top of, from the impact of that tree. And if you can see looking down there, you can see how the wall is actually pushed out that's the south side of the house. Next. More damage. Next. There's even a better picture of it there on the back panel. Like I said, this house is set for five years in this condition. 610 North Fifth Street, that's the front of the house. Next. There's the foundation underneath the, well, I should say, there was a foundation underneath the front door. It's gone now, which is dangerous. Next. And that shows some of the rot and everything on the house on the siding. Just in disrepair. Next. Another picture of the foundation there that's missing. Next. And around the corner there, that foundation is missing completely too, in different areas. Next. A little paint peeling, rot. Next. And windows being, this is over on the south side of the house. And as you can tell, the cement blocks are separating. So there's a tear from that one too. Next. Holes in the sides of the wall. Foundation problems. Yes. That window is completely open there too. Next. And that's the, another view of the front there, up to the side. The siding missing. Next. This is 821, 26 South Eighth Street. That's the front of the house, right there. Next. Excuse me. That's the interior of the house. As you can tell, they've had all the plaster, different areas taken off. It's missing. And they started this work without a permit. Next. Another picture of it right there. Next. This is the damage on the siding, which is especially siding there. Shows some of the damage on the foundation. Next. This is the outbuilding back there, which is falling apart basically too. Next. And that's the back of the house with the rot underneath the door. Next. They boarded up windows. Another picture of the same area. Next. And this is the siding, which is bottom siding, which is popular use from decaying back doors on. Next. This is that outbuilding right there, just wide open. Too. Next. This is 120 South Ninth Street. That's the front of the house there. As you can tell partially, the windows are boarded up, missing siding. There's rot there down low. Next. That's another picture, a better picture of the down, of the below part of the structure there where the floor is always hard and the fascia, the sillboard is, that's rotting. Next. That's the front door there. I take that back, that's the back door there. It's rotted underneath there and it's decaying. Next. And that's the front part of the house again, and it's missing siding and open to the shoe block inside. Next. Get another picture of the siding missing, falling apart from neglect. Next. Windows boarded up there. Next. And that's the foundation block, everything on the sill plate was tied to. Boarded up window again. Next. And here again, that's the front door this time, a better picture of it. The rot on it is rotting now. Next. Boarded up window again. Next. This is a view of the door side of the house, the hallway. Next. Body. Coming off the wall, off the exterior. This is 122 South Ninth Street, which is right next door to that property. That's the front of the house there. Next. As you can see, there's a little bit of rot in the overhang that there's a lot of moisture to get in there and it's just not keeping decaying. Next. That's the front porch with all the gray on it. And if you look at all the front portion.
That's some sort of rot on there.
Next. That's the siding right there. That, I don't know if you got burr or whatever, but it's fallen apart. And to the right of it is actually part of the sill plate. The rotting there to the right of it. Next. That's the sofa, the overhang falling apart. Next. Boarded up window right there. Next. Get the sofa on the other side of the house falling down. I support correctly. That's from the, the walls are falling. Next. This is the east side of the house. That window is completely glassy, completely all open. So it's easy access for everybody to. Next. That's a tree growing up. Something right next to the house. Drive around with us and see the rotten wood there. Next. And then there's another picture of another side of the house with the sofa. Next. That's the foundation showing that it's got a stress crack in it. Next. This is 1504 South G Street. Front of the house. Yes. That's an access hole that's not covered up so vermic can get in there and cause damage. Next. Fascia is rotting. Sofa is disordered, too. Next. And this one here is the, a little denture they put on the house. And you can tell the siding is popping these from. That's a better picture of the same siding area. Next. As you can tell right there, that's all rotted out. Everything's decaying, not been protected properly. Next. And you can see the listing on that wall there that's been pushed out. Next. And there's another one there of deterioration of the rough sides and all that. This is actually the addition. Our roof is, yeah. Going to the addition to the floor there. Next. This is the floor area of the addition that they did there. That's the door there going into the house, it's wide open. Next. Better picture of the door. Next. Some of the rot by the roof line. Next. 514 East Cedar. That right there, if you look at the roof there, there's no shingles or felt paper on it or anything that's been like that for years. So there's actually probably mold and melt in inside the house, but it's also some deterioration of the interior structure. And here's another picture of the same area showing the fascia part which is simply fell off. There's a little bit closer to look at the roof line there, which a lot of the roof, the shingles and everything is gone. Fascia. Next. That's the fascia that's missing again on the side of the house. Next. And as you can tell, it's rotted up there too. Roof area. That actually separated and fell down. Next. That's a window that's missing, no glasses. So it's easy access from somebody getting to the structure. Next. That's the front of the house. As you can tell, it's got some boarded up windows there too. Right there. Next. And then if you look at the bottom of the door there, that's rot. Too. Threshold. Next. More pictures of the foundation. If you look over there to the left side, that's the separation of the cement blocks. Next. There's a hole underneath the house too, wide open. That 514 Cedar. Next. 525 East Cedar. That's the front of the house, and that's the front portion of the house was inadequately supported with the cement blocks. Next. That's a closer look at the porch right there. And it is listing. Next. That's the side of the porch right there. Next. That's the south side of the house right there. As you can tell, windows boarded up. That's behind it. There is issue with the foundation too on this, that is missing the siding. And as you can tell, there's more siding that's chipped off. No issues with some of the foundation area there too. Next. And that's the same, basically the same area. Next. As you can tell, that one piece of siding pushed it up from the block. It was twisted too. Next. That's the roof line. And if you hide off this picture or it doesn't justice or, if you look at it, the. the peak of the roof is actually saggy. Actually. That's a little bit better picture of it, and it kind of shows what the saggy is through there. Like I said, it's kind of hard, hard to catch it with the camera. Next. And here again, that's a window with rot around the window. That's supporting the window closure. Next. That's the back of the house, and as you can tell, the area up there to that, it's wide open, so anything can fly in there at least. Next. That's exposed wiring on there, which is inadequate and dangerous. Next. That gives you a little bit better of the sag on the roof right there, whether it goes through there. Next. Broken out window, easy access into the house. Next. Want more pictures?
Did you change all of your plans?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Now, this piece of paper that I'm giving you, commissioners, this is what, if you demo dangerous structures, this goes on to the next day, tomorrow morning. And what we do is we fill out this structure at that address. And then what it does, it also says you have to get a hold of the dangerous services, services listed by a certain date, which is thirty days after tomorrow. We'll have that posted there, then I state it, then I sign it. So we practice this on there. Put on yellow, so it's very, very visible.
You send a copy to, to where they're living at too, or?
No, we already done, reach out to them. To certify bills and all that. They should be here if they have a problem with it.
But we need to make a motion, open a public hearing then, and then close it and then vote, or is that basically two in this? I make a motion, we reopen a public hearing to consider the resolutions with regards to declaring the stated structures. Yeah, declaring structures that are located as dangerous and safe.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We open a public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carried. Now open a public hearing. Any wish to speak on these?
Seeing no one wanting to speak on these. I'll give a second or two more. I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carried.
I would like to make a motion that we approve a resolution declaring structures located at eight twenty South Third Street, six ten North Fifth Street, one twenty six South Eighth Street, Eighth Street, one twenty South Ninth Street, one twenty two South Ninth Street, fifteen oh four South G Street, five fourteen East Cedar Avenue, and five twenty five East Cedar Avenue as unsafe and dangerous and direct that the said structures be repaired, short, or otherwise made safe, or in an alternative demolished.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on these properties?
I apologize for not being here on Friday. Seems like the only thing, I don't know, this question, just observation, I think the East Cedars and the South Eighth and Ninth were likely, I mean, just properties that were severely damaged in the, in the flood of ninety eight, or the subsequent flood in.
They were substantially damaged in the, back in what? The water that gets in there, this percolation water comes up from the house, and there's really no current to it, so they don't cause damage, it's just, it can cause vulnerability from being in there, it's not properly addressed. If you want Ninth Street, one twenty, one twenty two South Ninth Street, and then one twenty six South Eighth Street are in the floodplain area. And that's why we're addressing them. Because especially the one on Eighth Street, he started, he almost, uh, part of the walls to repair the property. If any of the flood plain area, he cannot do that, because he has proved that the floor is at least twelve inches above baseball level. And we've talked to them that own that property, and we told them they need a certified engineer to give the elevation of that. And as of today, they haven't got back with us.
So that would be conditional for any redevelopment of those properties for habitat dwellings, okay? Okay. Thank you, that's kind of what I was curious about.
Any further discussion? Sitting down, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Is an ordinance amending certain articles of the subdivision and zoning regulations, official zoning map of the twenty twenty two comprehensive plan, and incorporating such strategic regulations by reference.
I don't have any pictures for this.
Send them away, send them away, no pictures.
So from time to time, the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations have to be brought up to date. They had a major update in two thousand fourteen after the two thousand thirteen plan, the comprehensive plan was adopted. And then we did another comprehensive plan that you adopted earlier this year. And after, as soon as that was adopted, we immediately, planning region, immediately went to work to look at the regulations and see if there was any changes that need to be made. Some of the changes are related to what's happening in practice. Some of it's clarifications to help make them more enforceable, more understandable. But there was also a few regulations that need to be changed as a result of the comprehensive plan. There's several things that we focused on as we went through all of those regulations. The subdivision regulations, one of the main changes that happened to them is, right now, the site plan review section of our regulations, and subdivision regulations, which had never made any sense to me. So we're going to move that into the zoning regulations, it's easier for developers to find it. So that's, that's a big change in subdivision. On the zoning side, of course, that comes in. There's some development standards that come with it, that are kind of separated out in the commercial and the industrial districts. There's also several changes to different uses that are allowed, especially in the commercial and the industrial districts. A lot of it, to be honest, makes the, just a little bit more lenient, a little lesser restrictions on a few things, and talks a little bit more about, you know, some uses that may not have been in there before, so there's some things like that. And then beyond that, the other thing that we really focused on was the, kind of the supplemental regulations. So we looked at items like fences. There was a group that came in and talked about amateur radio antennas for ham radio, ham radio operators, there's, so there's a section in there for that. There's also lots of talks in the planning community across the country about things like accessory dwellings, so if you have more than one dwelling or property, so we didn't change a lot of stuff there, but did get it defined. We're seeing more and more of that across the country. And actually, we do have some here too, where there's these alley houses, if you will, or a garage apartment or something like that. And we don't have a whole lot of regulation that talks about that sort of thing. So this, again, really just defines what that is in case we need to do something further with that in the future. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else. From the big picture, oh, there's a few changes to signage pertinent to what we're, our political season, we just kind of wrapping up right now. Temporary signage. Made that a lot simpler, easier to understand. To be totally honest, there's a lot of signs that have been put up around the community during this cycle that actually don't follow the regulations. This new, new provisions would make it a lot easier to enforce, a lot easier to understand for political candidates for office too. So they'll understand where you can put it, when you can put it there, that sort of thing. And the other, probably the other major thing that I need to make note of tonight is the zoning map. There is a few changes to it that are going to be happening if you approve this. There's a couple of mixed use district areas, one at Eighth and Radio Lane, and one that's kind of in the southwest.
Is it Eighth and Radio Lane or Sixth and Radio Lane?
It's from Six to Eight.
Six to Eight, I have it.
Red in that general. And then the other one is in that southwest area. It's south of Tyler, the reason that was made mixed use originally was because thinking that maybe if the bypass, the southwest bypass ever came in, it might change the land use pattern. Well, it's ten years later and we still have no southwest bypass. And nothing seems to be changed in that area, so I personally felt it was more appropriate to get that restricted back down a little bit more to residential. That's what that community is, that neighborhood is primarily residential with, with not a lot of businesses. And again, if there was anything that developed during that period, they would be considered legally non-conforming, so they didn't remain. I don't think there's a whole lot of that that's happened in there. So it kind of cleans up that, there was a few other little minor things. I guess the only other thing was where the hike bike trail, it didn't have any zoning, and so we're establishing zoning for it. That's that property that's along the canal, kind of east of where the new Dollar General is. Skews back to the southeast. But other than that, I'd be open to any questions you have about any of these, I didn't want to take a whole lot of time to talk about this, but if there was anything that you saw and that are, anybody here that has any questions of anything I saw on there, I think I can answer.
I again apologize if you guys talked about this, and I'm sorry, I'm not projecting right now. But i- in the, making the adjustments to an area where we maybe have our hope has waned on the continuation of the loop around the city. Are, are there any things that could make a future project less appealing or affordable with developments there with these changes?
Not that I am aware of. What we could do, assuming that ever comes in, is we could look at doing amendment to the comprehensive plan for that area, so that we could kind of map out what we'd like to see. That's, that's how I would probably address that situation, because it would affect, it'd affect a lot of different things. Part of the other thing about the changes we made match that future land use map that was adopted in the twenty two plan. So, it was, it was adopted as part of that too. Yeah, I don't think it'd be that big of a deal to change it if something were to be needed, but we would want some sort of a larger picture, look at it.
There, okay, I'm asking from, from this construct there, three incredibly late model, beautiful churches in northeast Wichita that all functionally, none of them would have been built had not the city in their widening of twenty first street been compelled to acquire those properties that had more modest properties that had been built prior to that plan, I guess I'm just looking for any real investment that might happen that would turn into some litigious matter.
Part of the problem too is TADA hasn't given us any indication of where that will actually go. We guess that it would kind of follow that corridor curve up, but that's just assumptions at this point. I haven't, I haven't even tried to reach out to them.
Okay.
We have acquired the, the properties there from Madison. Uh, some, some, yeah. So we, we do have to pull clever to property.
Okay. So, okay, so we have, those, the critical piece of it, we functionally have control over already. Okay, that's, that was what I was.
Well, that's what I have on the bypass, they got to land, you know, a lot earlier through Kurt Freeland's time span, and, and that's made it a lot easier for that bypass to go through, as we are held to land.
Right.
Save it, so this is what you're talking about.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion, abandoning certain articles of the subdivision zoning regulations, official city zoning map per se, per set to the two thousand twenty two comprehensive plan, and incorporating such regulations by reference.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? No, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Dinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
You're stalling.
Yes.
So the next item, with item number five. And consider the first reading of an ordinance adopting the budgeted pay plan to become effective November eighteenth.
Evening mayor, commissioners, I have several items for us to go through this evening, but I'll try not to take too much of your time. The first one is a relatively simple agenda item, and that is changing a job title. We have kept our ordinance very clean, only having job titles that actually exist. And a new job title has been recommended, and that would be changing the job title of building official, which is the position that my fellow sits in, to the title of neighborhood services director. There are no other changes, no changes to the job description, or the compensation rate, it's just a job title change.
Well, that being said, I move that we adopt an ordinance for the budget pay plan to become effective November eighteenth, twenty twenty three, to change the job title from building official to neighborhood services director.
Good enough, is that sufficient? Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Sitting down, this is, in his roll call vote.
Commissioner Dinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
You're stalling.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item, item number six, is April the eighth health insurance renewal for the twenty twenty four.
Okay, it just seems amazing to me that it's been already another year that I can come before you and discuss one of the most highly regarded employee benefits that we provide, and that is our health insurance through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas. We received our renewal for the plan year twenty twenty four, which is January, December thirty first to twenty four. And the wonderful news is that we received a decrease of around two point three. As you know, decreases are nearly unheard of. Don't mean to dampen the mood, but be prepared for next year, you just have to remember that, it is cyclical, it goes up and down, it's based on trends and utilization. We are proposing, if approved, to remain in the relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas, that we will not change employee health premium contributions. We will continue with the contributions for payroll deductions that we are doing currently. Do you have any questions for me? It's a wonderful plan. Employees appreciate this benefit very, very much, it's helpful for them and their families, the premiums are still, payroll deductions are still affordable for the employees. Besides our K P S and K P N F, it's number one.
That being said, I approve the employee, employees health insurance renewal for the two thousand twenty four plan year.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? No, again, those.
Aye.
Aye.
On behalf of employees and their families.
All right, so item number seven is approved the employee dental insurance renewal for the 2024 plan year.
Okay, so along with health insurance, usually dental insurance. We do use a different company for our dental. We use Delta Dental of Kansas. Our Delta Dental plan is a self-funded plan, meaning that the employer pays an administrative fee per employee on the plan, on the plan per month, plus up to $1,500 worth of claims on each person on the plan. So we have a finite amount of dollars that could be spent for this plan. So the thing that we really look at is the administrative fee because the benefits are the same. So the administrative fee, Delta Dental has suggested that we go up from $5.40 per member per month to, no, excuse me, $5.50, I did this at the meeting the other day, $5.50 2023 plan year per member per month. They want to go to $5.60, okay? That's just about another $120 a year for the administrative fees. The nice thing about this is in this quote, they have offered us the opportunity to go into a three-year rate guarantee, meaning that that $5.60 per month will be good for '24, '25, and '26. This is the plan that we have had since, with a few tweaks, since I came here in 2005 with Delta Dental. And I have to be honest, I've never heard of them.
So how many people's audience is in that plan right now?
I would say probably 110.
117.
Is that sticking to your mind? Some of our participation in our health and dental is very, very high. Almost nearly all of the employees take these benefits. So really what we're looking at is just the approval to continue for three more years with Delta and to do the $5.60 a month.
I'll make a motion, we approve the employee dental insurance renewal for 2024 plan year.
I didn't think that was the second.
The increase.
I didn't think that was it.
Yeah, with the, with the increase.
Yeah, intentionally.
And I'll prove it with Delta Dental.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go with, thank you again.
All right. Item number eight is approve the employee flexible spending account, FSA, benefit administration for the 2024 plan year.
Okay, I'm going to go into just a tad more detail on this one and then next item. The reason for that is they call it going out and going shopping. It's a season, and that's when you go to all the different vendors and providers and see if you can get a better deal than you're currently receiving. So I did that with, obviously, the dental I did, but nothing could come close. Health, no, because we've got a decrease. But flexible spending accounts, not all employees participate, pardon me, in a flexible spending account. A brief explanation is where its employees can set aside money pre-tax, federal, state, social security, and Medicare, so that they can utilize it for approved items regarding their health, their dental, their vision, could be their glasses, could be co-pays for their doctor's office visits, could be over-the-counter medications, co-pays for prescription drugs, many, many, many things. And the wonderful thing about this is you get like a debit card or a credit card. And so you start, you do your payroll deductions pre-tax, you save yourself those tax dollars, which also saves the city the match on the FICA, social security and Medicare. And then you go to the pharmacy for your prescriptions and you can just slide your card. It's your money, but it's not as painful because it's coming out of your check, you don't really see it, and it's very, very helpful. And another nice thing about it, say you choose to do $2,000 for the plan year, and you go get your glasses on January 1st. You could pay, you could get your whole glasses paid for. You just continue to do the payroll deduction throughout the year. So, long story short, we were going with a different company for several years. I have had a lot of complaints about their customer service. And when I hear that about an employee benefit from employees, I really pay attention. So this is something that I really wanted to look at. And I did find another provider that I think, I hope, you never know until you completely get into it, you know, but I hope will be more responsive in the customer service. And that is working through Freedom Claims Management and New Synergy, which is a company that will administer the cards and the accounts for us. They've got lots of big clients. They work with other employers in Kansas, public affairs as well. They have a good reputation. And it's even $0.05 less per member per month. So really, all the employer pays for is the per member per month administrative fee, which is $0.25. But I think it's going to be a more friendly and useful benefit for the employees by going to another provider. Currently, we only have 23 participants on this. It has gone down in the last few years, but I hope it increases because it is a nice benefit. So it's really just moving to this other provider and the administrative fee.
Well, I move that we approve the employee flexible spending account, FSA, benefit administration for the 2024 plan year.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine is approve the employee group term life, AD&amp;D, insurance benefit for the 2024 plan year.
Hey, this is another one I went shopping for. We have been with, we offer a small life insurance plan paid for by the employer for all of the full-time employees. And another provider that hasn't been real good in being responsive with customer service with those of us that administer the plan, I thought, you know, and maybe I should go shop and just see what's out there. Well, I did, and I did get different quotes. The one I am suggesting to you is with US Alliance. And they are another large provider. Many employers work with them. And we can get the coverage for even less than we are currently paying, albeit not a lot less, but a little bit less. And instead of paying around $440 a month, it would be around $420 a month for that life insurance plan, which also includes accidental death and dismemberment benefits. So this one, it's just going to a different provider and the administrative fee cost.
I'll make a motion that we approve the employee group term life, AD&amp;D insurance benefit for 2024 plan year and go with the US Alliance Group. As staff recommended. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you. I apologize for all the additional quotes in that document. There were things they provided to us, but I just wanted to give you the whole documents. That's why I saw them here. Okay.
All right. Item number 10 is a resolution adopting by reference the updated employee manual for the City of Art Kansas City and repealing resolution number 2022-04-3475.
All right, so this one is about training time and regularly scheduled shifts. When you, and we want to change this policy to make it work better for everyone. What we had is the situation recently and where employees went to training, and they were from the fire department, okay? And so the way the policy was currently written, it would provide for them receiving compensation for all the hours they're in training, which of course they should because they're essentially working when they're in required training, right? But they also were getting paid for all of their regularly scheduled shift time. And when you look at that being 24-hour shifts, that could turn into a lot of hours altogether. What we needed to do, and this is what we're suggesting we change, is do like I just checked with Patrick Ramirez, and it is what the City of Winfield does. You get paid for the greater of your hours in training or your regularly scheduled working hours. And that way, no one is harmed, everyone is made whole, and it doesn't become excessive in the amount of hours. A lot of discussions and thought have gone into this suggestion.
And hours got excessive?
That, when you were adding all regularly scheduled working hours plus all hours in training, it was a lot of hours. It happened one payroll period for two folks, right? And we cut it quickly.
So that was essentially paying one person to be in two places.
Yes. Yes, and we want to make sure that we don't cause the city to pay excessively or the employee to be harmed, and by doing the greater of, seem like the most fair and logical.
Do we have any video footage of any employees being in two different?
I don't know. They're supposed to be good. They're going to be able to view it.
Your motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution adopting by reference the updated employee manual for the City of Art Kansas City and repealing resolution number Second.
Now, I have a question. Since we're repealing this, have you added it to the menu?
Well, okay, so that is another thing that you probably do need to know about. It is, I am currently working on an update for the entire manual, and there will be other things that I will be bringing to you. My hope, my very strong hope is for an effective date of January 1st. It is a lot of work, a lot of proofreading, so wish me luck. And yes, I want to do that and get some other things, get some other things updated in that.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, would you mind articulating what your concern was with that question?
Well, since we're repealing this, is there going to be something in the manual that takes place? And she said it would be updated.
There would, okay. So I guess then, when you asked the question the way that you did, I wondered if we needed to do this now separate from that or have a repeal and replace.
So what you're repealing was the last resolution adopting the previous manual. So this, so you're adopting the manual with this update into repealing the previous.
Right. But, yeah.
We're not repealing the whole manual. She's not adding it.
But I think what they're saying is that you're taking that out so you have a void because the new one isn't ready yet to go in.
Yes. So whenever you do this, you do have a responsibility to make sure that all the employees are aware of it. So it will be coming out from Human Resources, probably in an email and a hard copy, included in your payroll check as a stuffer, so that everyone is aware of the change.
Okay, yeah, I, to put it in a different context, it's like saying, oops, that's not a safe speed limit, let's take the sign down for the speed limit, but not put one up that says, what is a safe speed limit? Then you just don't have any to, you know, just, I mean, it's legalese, but.
I would, if it's not down in writing, if they're going to be paid a certain way, what are they going to do?
You have established a protocol, is what you, I think, what you explained.
I have done that in the past.
All right.
Because you're all absolutely right, I need to know.
All right, so that, so, and you're documenting, you're saying you're documenting, this is the way we're going to do. It's not, we're not picking, I'm not picking on Commissioner Warren. I'm just saying, we're all going to get nothing. I'm for us because we hope. But, okay, anyway, but, yeah, okay, but, yeah, I, I'm just, what I heard you ask kind of raised a little pink flag, you know, for, for me. So, but thank you for that discussion.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is item number 11. A resolution authorizing the proposal submitted by Banker Security of Slade, Kansas, to a particular department at City Hall for an amount not to exceed $14,705.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Matt Singer, your IT manager. I've been working on this item with Nick Rizzio, your municipal project manager. He's out of town tonight for a training. What we're looking at, and if I could pull up the actual quote on the screen. So we have an existing security panic button, or hold-up button system that is past its end of life. It's been in service for about as many years as I've been employed here, which is 17 years. I've contacted the company that it's provided from, Secure Tech out of Texas. The system cannot be upgraded. It can't be have additional buttons put on it. It's, it is indeed end of life. For the security and especially the safety of the staff and my coworkers here, wanted to look at a replacement for that. So I have received quotes from them years prior to now. The cost was going to float around $14,000 to $15,000. So we looked at some other proposals for companies for access control, security, panic buttons, future cameras. Went ahead and decided to reach out to our existing provider for access control and camera systems for our police department, which is Banker Security. They used to be known as FileSafe, out of Salina. They currently provide the access control for our police department since Captain Jim Hallway's in the room. I'll mention to him, he was dealing with a system at the police department that was also end of life. We've replaced their system earlier this year so that he doesn't have headaches programming it and adding fobs and key cards to that system. Reason I reached out again to Banker Security is for this building, our first responders are obviously the police department across the street. They utilize that system. They also utilize that system to secure the north bays that they have evidence and equipment in on the north side of this building. So I think of it like an Oreo cookie. You have cookie on this side, cookie on this side, where the cream in the middle. Why not have all of the systems contiguous and work with each other? I could look at another vendor, but that's talking different key cards, different fobs. Our police personnel come over, they're having to mess with different fobs when they're at the sensor. It would be easier, not only for our staff here at City Hall, but for them when they're in a panic situation and response time is of the essence. Their key card that they access, the police department will also access this building because those systems will be federated. Along with that price, we have the quotes for $14,000. It also includes door modules for door security. It's been proposed for security to have the main traffic come either through the front door or through the elevator access for ADA, and to leave the side doors locked for staff only so that the eyes in the building can track, you know, the traffic patterns and who's coming in and out. We also have the ability to put glass break sensors on the doors. So we do have existing steel or metal composite in your glass doors. Right now, if someone broke those, if we had glass break sensors on that, that would also trip you along. We took more of a comprehensive approach. So instead of just replacing the panic buttons, this also adds your panic buttons, your glass break, your security, and additional features. It will also have the ability to tie into a, to a future camera system. So, not to go too techno-babble, but I should probably stop there and ask you if you have any questions.
On the general, the funding, will we, will we, in our budget, be able to do this, the fourteen thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, it's always good to keep things similar and working together. Keep less complication with the business, so to speak, or something like this makes it a lot easier and. Well, yeah, not only that, you know, we have a lot of cash deposits right across the room here that, you know, times several thousands of dollars that, you know, that needs to be protected, I mean, with security.
Recently, the the glass door that is off this back hallway that goes into the backside of finance, we've recently had to just keep that door locked to make sure that we don't have people coming in that door by accident thinking it's a public service area and really it's the backside, the ladies in finance don't see, they're not watching that area. Or you have the mailboxes and copier and sensitive information for staff only back there, so.
Well, this will be protection for employees too.
Right.
That being said, I'd make a motion that resolves authorizing a proposal submitted by Banker Security of Sonic, Kansas, security, particular departments within City Hall for an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
I'll second that.
And moved and second, if there any further discussion? See, those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve. A resolution approving the notice of budget hearing for publication and setting the hearing date for public hearing at five thirty P M on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three to amend the twenty twenty-three budget for the City of Art Kansas City. Our item is not nearly as exciting as the security, but this is just a routine yearly item that we have to do to amend for twenty twenty-three, I know probably seven funds that could potentially hit a budget violation. So tonight is to set the hearing for November twenty-first.
That sounds pretty straightforward. I make a motion, we approve a resolution or that we, yeah, approve a resolution with regards to the notice of budget hearing for publication and setting the date for a public hearing at five thirty P M on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three to amend the twenty twenty-three budget for the City of Art Kansas City.
But sharing the observation, I'm sorry, I'm just going to go ahead and do it anyway. I think that since I didn't get the second with my words, I want to say you undersold the enthusiasm and excitement with your presentation. Yeah, yeah, the verse was every bit as as riveting as the other matters we've taken on this evening. But you have your say.
Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Any discussion from the Commissioners on items?
I have one item. I had a citizen approach me about Skyline from eighth to fifteenth that the city owns that. I don't know if it's eighth, it may be twelfth or, anyway, there's a section on Skyline that the city owns, and they wanted us to look into that and see why we own only one section of that road. So I said I would bring it up.
I'm looking through that, I would look at the map and there is, it has been annexed in there, the properties on either side, not not in the city limits, so. It seems like I I've heard stories of some type of agreement in the past, but I'll have to research that and learn more about it, and then I'll get back to you later.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments from the all audience?
I did, but we moved on.
Go ahead, go ahead. I can back up. I have reverse.
Okay, well, let's come together on the twenty-first and I'll bring it up, how about that?
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, no one has signed up? I don't know if there's anyone else in the audience that's here at which to speak.
No one? Mr. Manager.
Okay, I'll go very quickly. So tomorrow, from noon to one, there is a virtual Heartland Flyer impact kind of update. So if anybody would like to participate, I think I did forward the information to you before, but I can do it again in the morning. So I'll just forward it to all of you again for the link to to get on that. It's kind of an update on where they're at with that, the Heartland Fire extension. Then you guys are invited to participate in the placemaking grant presentation. So that's that fifty thousand dollar Blue Cross Peace Shield grant the city was awarded. So there's going, they're going to be in town the morning of the ninth at eight forty-five at Lovey Watson Park with a big check to present. So you guys would like to participate in that, it's at Lovey Watson at eight forty-five A M. And then the Veterans Day Parade will be at eleven A M on Saturday, the eleventh. We received two class action settlement, one with DuPont, one with three M. This is for the PFAS, which is a a chemical that's in water and air and this thing. It's kind of a new emerging thing that EPA is going to be watching. So we let, we worked with Larry and and the attorney for K M U and kind of learn more about it. And we and we are eligible to participate in this settlement. So Rod has started the paperwork on it to to make sure that we're eligible for it. And then he's also working on some bids for testing that we'll need to do for the water. And so we're kind of in the initial stage, but what amounts to is is EPA moves forward with this new requirement with water. It's going to be extremely expensive to to tell or to treat. Class action settlement is supposed to help cities eligible to offset those costs. And so we just want to get in the ground for, make sure that we're moving forward with it. And and if we need to treat for those things in the future, we'll we'll have a little financial help with it. It'll be extremely expensive and there's a lot of unknowns that we're still working through, but just wanted to make sure it's on your radar and and as as we talk about it more, you're not surprised, so. The new signs at the former Wake Forest human plant are up. So it's been renamed the Art City Water Environmental Protection Facility. So there, all four signs are up out there now and done. At the next work session, we'll present the water rate analysis draft. And then the the consultant that we've used to work with this will be here too to to help walk through it and answer questions. And so you'll be aware that's coming. And then and then a little bit of bad news, the next, so that next phase of walking trail that we keep getting pushed back on, we got delayed again, it's planned production, so we're looking at delay till March twenty-fourth now, or March of twenty-four. So after we got the latest notification, I got a hold of K dot and then got a hold of our design engineer. And we're just going to figure out, there's some disconnect with with this designer. There's, what it sounds like is we'll make some design changes to the plans and and then send them back to K dot. And then another another branch of K dot will have other changes. And it seems like it's just a, there's there's some type of not.
In the runaround, say it, say it like it is, we're getting the runaround.
So we're going to, we're going to try to make, get that stopped and get, because this thing is way past due, it needs to be done. And so I just want to keep you updated on that. So that's all I have tonight, so.
Thing else, come before the commission.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Moving second, we adjourn. Say aye.